So you guys are looking at your futures. How do you see immediately applying this experience?
Well, for mock trial, just public speaking, even just now in class or wherever I'm out somewhere, does mock trial has helped me gain, as well as my other teammates, gain more confidence speaking in front of people, just because where in class we often have written stuff and ready and prepared, where mock trial, we're on our feet, would just make speaking in front of people, we have a script, is that much easier.
Enjoying a nice job.
Have you guys ever given this presentation to your peers at school?
We do, for mock trial, we've never given a presentation to the student body. It's such that to get through an entire presentation usually takes about two hours.
Yeah.
So it...
But even to kind of give this kind of overview like you've just done here, I mean, I agree with everything you said. I love that this is like a totally different opportunity to engage in a different way and everything that you learn is absolutely life lessons, right? I mean, most of us learn public speaking in some way, shape, or form as adults in our work careers and it doesn't come easy. And it still doesn't come easy. It's something you always have to work on, right? So the fact that you're doing it at such a young age and starting here just is going to help you later in life. It would be an awesome thing to be able to extend that somehow.
Yeah.
And recruit more people that might be interested in doing this, even in a smaller setting if they're not ready to go to Harvard or whatever, just to...
Yeah, that's something that we'll have to look into, obviously, to try to... No, but it's a great skill and regardless of if any of the students who participated in mock trial or harden all kinds of... If Skylar, I want you to be a member of Congress, but if not, she's learned some life lessons that are going to extend, that she can apply to multiple different areas in her life. Shaun may never be a lawyer, wants to do something else, but he's still learning these skills that's going to be beneficial to him. We all could probably get better, like, oh, I don't, I'm put on the spot, I don't know what to do. And in mock trial, you're in a competition and there's no script, there's, you have to think for yourself. And you learn. It's trial by fire.
I kind of have the opposite of Shauny. So going into this, I actually want to pursue a career in counterterrorism. So going into this, I had two briefings that worked with Afghanistan and human trafficking in regards to terrorism. So going into this, I was like, yes, let's go. But it was a totally different setting and so, but it was still really good. So like, it really strengthened my passion for the topic and what I want to do with my life, so, answer your question.
If it's appropriate and you're interested in helping us with some of the subcommittees.
I'm here.
Two birds with one stone, yeah. It's ringers.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for supporting this program.
Thank you. All right. Lizzie, you're up.
So in terms of sports, our winter season just came to an end and we're getting ready for spring. The both varsity and basketball teams made it to the playoffs and our Alpine ski team did very, very well this year. And in return for that, we ended up having, we filled the whole podium for ski meister for girls. And then we had two boys on the podium for ski meister. And a cool fact, in case you guys didn't notice, we're one of eight schools in the country that has ski jumping. So that's what makes it possible for us to put these kids on the podium for ski meister. varsity track and field, their season begins on the 23rd and they're planning their fundraiser, which is tomorrow, it's the dance in Lockins. varsity Friday, thought it was Thursday, Friday. That's on Friday.
That would be a rough Friday.
Yes, that would be a very rough school day. Then the softball and baseball teams, they had their bake sale yesterday, which fundraises for their kid pod trip. And they also begin on the 23rd. Theater, they're showing their spring play, Turn Silvania, on March 19th and 20th. The Go Green Club finished their big project fundraising over a thousand dollars. And we now have actual silverware in the cafeteria. The service club, yeah, the service club did a blood drive today, which went pretty smoothly and successfully. And they're now planning a food pantry drive, a clothing drive, and a luggage drive. The National Honor Society is planning their father-daughter date night, which is on April 4th, if anyone wants to come. The soccer class is planning a color on this year. The junior class is currently planning the prom and they're doing a fundraiser called Bags of Happiness, where they sell little bags of candy and then those bags will be delivered on St. Patrick's Day to whoever you chose to give them to. And then the senior class is doing the annual dodgeball tournament tomorrow, Thursday. And everyone in senior class is very relieved to be finishing their senior projects, which our gallery, our kind of practice around gallery is on Friday. And I feel as though I always share the positives in high school and middle school too. But there's definitely some disappointments, some confusion among the voting turnout yesterday. Not turnout, great turnout, but on what got passed and what didn't. But overall, all the students are so, so thankful for the school board that they've done and the community. So, a little bit negative, but we're all still staying positive and having fun doing some work.
Yeah. So for a couple of new faces in the audience, Sunapee School Board likes to have a student representative, so we don't get updates, we just hear from the students themselves. So Lizzie has been our volunteer this year and has done a very good job and kept, at times, Mr. Morninghan on his toes, his updates after you take most of his update away when you give yours. Thank you. Thank you for your service to the community and the school board this year. That's what student reps have done a good job. Moving on down.
Well, we were able to engage our students in the democratic process yesterday. Project Sunapee sponsored a gift ballot, where the students were able to vote for their favorite, Dr. Schusbach, as well as options for some special activities for the week before April vacation. We had a hundred and six students vote. The winners were an ice cream party and pajama day and the Laura's. So we'd like to thank Project Sunapee for getting the kids involved in that way. Our spring clubs have started, they started yesterday. We have 10 special interest clubs ranging from hiking to fun with food and yarn and string, lots of things going on, also drama and Girls on the Run. We've been trying to get a Girls on the Run program started since I got here, Amy Wilson, which is a really great program that develops physical and emotional wellbeing in girls and girl in Harvard. So we're really happy to have that. And our second annual math night will be held next Thursday, March 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We'll have age-appropriate games in classrooms, we'll have estimation prizes, the unified arts teachers will have stuff available in the library, and we will have pizza and water available for 100 pennies or 20 nickels or 10 pence or four quarters or any other version of one dollar.
Nice finish there, I like that. Thank you very much. Ms. Reed?
So Lizzie covered so many things that we have going on, so I'm going to just shed light on two events that we've had recently. One is, we had a climate change evening put together by our sixth graders. And this was a fabulous endeavor that came out of collaboration time that we've added to our NESC evaluation process and getting feedback about ways we can improve. We've carved out more time for our teachers to collaborate and our sixth grade team took advantage of that time to put together a new interdisciplinary unit on climate change. So I'm seeing a lot, some parents who were there and saw their children there. Teachers in math, science, English, and art coordinated to produce maps, posters, videos, models, sustainable and resilient homes. Students made presentations about the environment and changes we're seeing in climate. It was a really fantastic evening. It was really great to see the sixth grade students already working on their public speaking skills and to just see us make connections across the whole curriculum and everything really dovetailing, where students could do some really deep rich learning. So that was fantastic. We also had our annual college career readiness fair that we do annually on the Friday before February break. This year we used a panel discussion model, where students learned about opportunities and apprenticeship, community college options, employability skills, how to build a transcript, playing athletics in college. And this year we had an outstanding guest speaker. So he was a member of the class of 1995 and he's a commander with the U.S. Coast Guard. He's highly decorated. And one of his, a segment of his speech really, I think, struck the student body in a really great way. He really wanted to come back and shed light on where he and many of his classmates have gone since graduating from Sunapee. So I just want to share just a small piece of his speech, but he said, when he thinks, when he looks at the class of 1995, he said, "Among us, we have lawyers, architects, military contractors working for Raytheon, and bankers. New Hampshire's deputy state archaeologist is a 95 grad and so is the director of the Abbott Library. We have IT professionals, folks who run their doctorates, directors of human resource agencies. We have a graduate who orchestrates music on Broadway and who's been nominated for a Grammy and Tony. We have a graduate who serves a greater cause as the executive director of the Nashua Center, the nonprofit who supports people with disabilities. No matter where you find a 95 grad, you will find us leading, setting an example for all Sunapee graduates." And just in the crowd that day, for our students to see someone who has graduated talk about all the other kids who came out of just one class and what they've accomplished, it was a really powerful moment. So that day in its totality was wonderful. We had a student talent show in the afternoon and a really high note for the year.
Great, great updates across the board, thank you. Superintendent update, please, sir.
So I'm sure we've heard a lot about the next topic of the coronavirus, but we have been touched daily with the DOE, the Department of Health and Human Services, and the CDC. Our nurses are up to date as well as I am. There are weekly phone calls that happen on Monday, just keeping us up to date on what's going on locally and nationally. We have been told directly to stay the course, keep our kids in school, keep them in school, follow CDC guidelines. So we've been able to do that. Our kids to this point are healthy and hopefully so are our adults, but we'll continue to monitor that situation as it unfolds. I wanted to make the board aware that I've talked in the past about legislation and my sort of involvement in our state through our association, but Tara's also taking part in the same thing. And there are times when she goes down to Concord and she testifies on the impact of bills that would affect Sunapee and what that impact would be. And one of those bills that she has recently testified on and potentially will be passing will be House Bill 1555. And what that does is it modifies the age where children are allowed to receive special education services up to their birth date of 22. So I'm going to ask you to think back when we went through the budget process this year, we talked about cutting our budget back because we have a number of children who are aging out of our programs. This bill right now has passed the House Ed Committee 19 to 0. And if passed, would potentially go into effect 60 days after the governor signed the bill, which could have a tremendous impact on us directly. And so I just wanted to make you aware that we are actively engaged in Concord with our legislation to try to help them understand, our legislators, to help them understand the impact that things they do down there, they may not think that they made a quote, "Well, it's only 30 something kids in the state." Well, it might be 30 something kids in the state, but we have a good handful of those kids right here in Sunapee. And that's a big impact potentially to us with our budget. So I just want to make you aware that we do get down to Concord, we do try to voice our opinions down there. I'm going to ask Shaun and Cindy Volante, our school adjustment counselor, to prepare a presentation for you folks on our at-risk youth behavior surveys, so we have our results from last year. We just received them last year, last week, we went through them a little bit, but I'll have them present something for you, probably in May. April, we have a pretty full agenda, so probably in May we'll bring a presentation for you as well there. The principal search committee, so we have an ad that is out, currently out, looking for a new principal. Mrs. Berger, this is retiring from us at the end of this year. We work for her well, obviously, but to date we have 12 applicants. The deadline for applications is this Friday. I'm putting a committee together, the principal search committee, if you will. It will be myself, Tara, I've had a community member graciously volunteer after her long involvement in the building campaign, so Caitlin, thank you for that. And I'm looking for a board member. And so I'm looking for one board member that might be willing to step forward and serve on that committee. If you're interested, you can just shoot me an email. It would be hopefully the last week of March, first week of April, probably two nights, maybe one, but potentially two afternoons, where we'd ask you to sit and interview with our panel. If you're interested, please just let me know. We'll talk a little bit more, but we had our first New Hampshire Department of Education audit for federal compliance. It's in your packet, we actually fared really well there. One of the components that we were missing is a subset to our policy GBC, GBEC and ADD, drug-free workplace and drug-free schools, which we'll be talking about shortly. I am in the throes of our evaluation process and you will be receiving my evaluation probably tomorrow or Friday from my administrative assistant.
Russ, can I ask you a question? So the administrator replacement, we had initially opened that as an anticipated opening.
Yep.
So how, like, what we're moving forward with interviews, how, what's being conveyed to these people?
So at this point, we've determined that we're just going to be looking for an elementary school principal. And that's how we left an anticipated, and if it was to change, we're without, based upon obviously the vote, and made that adjustment.
Yeah, so we don't have to do anything different at this point?
At this point.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Russ.
Everybody's not used to how a school board works. The superintendent does the hiring. Good news come to us, the board, for example, we don't do the administrative hiring, but we are often served, one of us is served on the board, like Russ is asking for a volunteer board, just to make sure everybody understands how this works.
And can I just take a minute and just thank you as board, your level of involvement, engagement, not only in this building process, but this year has been just far, has been outstanding. As a superintendent, as a building administrator, I've been involved in a lot of different communities, not a lot, a few different communities, a few different boards, and it's just great to have your level of engagement and your level of willingness to step up and take things on. So from my chair, I thank you very much for what you've done to this community.
It's a great community to serve. All right. We get a lot of the school board, I can see by your body language and face, you also feel the excitement we feel for these meetings. This is the part that you feel most exciting for the community, is we're going to talk about policy. That's mostly why we're here. Building safety, a couple of other things in policy, so this is go time. Do you want to take it away?
Well, usually we try to attack policy in bunches where, you know, we'll meet with the administrators several times a year and come up with a group of policy changes. Russ alluded to one tweak that we have to make due to legal mandate, the drug-free workplace and drug-free schools policy. By the way, anytime we do a first or second reading for a policy, it is posted on our website and so you can go there, you know, after the fact, look at what we're talking about. In the case of this policy, on page two of the policy that's posted, in the second paragraph, you'll see a highlighted section. We're basically having to tweak the language so that district employees or contracted personnel who are working on a federal or a state project or grant, anyone in those circumstances that is convicted of a drug offense, we have 10 days, once we've been informed of that conviction, to report to whatever agency is appropriate, whatever agency that employer, that contractor is working on behalf of. So we've inserted language into the policy on drug-free workplace and drug-free schools just to ensure that we're in compliance with that legal requirement. I think that's it. Is that it, Russ?
Scott, you nailed it.
Okay.
That's a very good job again on the committee. Showing up or... All right. I lost my place. Drug-free...
We have to vote, action.
Action, on the first reading, sorry. Let me catch up to speed in front of a roomful of people. Can I get a motion to accept the first reading of the policy as stated?
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of the policy as stated.
Got a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of accepting the, we have it in front of us, the policy as stated on the drug-free workplace, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sometimes I follow the rules too much and it makes the meetings longer. Sometimes you can just go with as stated. Action items, we need to approve the proposed extracurricular stipend positions. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed district extracurricular stipend position.
Looking for a second.
I'll second Carrie's motion.
Scott brings his second. Discussion? So I don't know if stipend positions means anything to you, but our students, the last number was 80 or 81 percent of them are involved in extracurricular activities. If you look at the sheet involved, extracurricular doesn't mean sports, that's only sports up there. If you're not aware of what are some of the other things are, spring drama, prize speaking. After school, where are all the kids? They're usually here, busy, doing fun stuff with caring people, fun with food, yoga, hiking, crypto, I'm not going to ask. Kind kids, clay, boot camp, gardening, yarn and string, and two halftime positions, Melissa and Cindy, for Girls on the Run, which is a big win you previewed earlier. So it's great to see what our, hear what our kids are doing. Sports are great, the other stuff outweighs the long list. If they come up with something, you seem to provide it, so thank you to everybody on that. That was my discussion, this bit of a statement. Any discussion or other statements? All in favor of accepting the district extracurriculars stipend positions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Information items, I pulled the voting review up to the front, so we can comment more if you want. We are a longtime K through 12, pre-K, well legally we have to be pre, or pre-K district, pre-K 12, and there's a lot of feelings, there's a lot of concern. We have a known old building, we have had extensive discussion about the different problems, but the board is, I'm personally energized by a lot, a list of things from yesterday that I think that was covered sufficiently by you guys. We are a pre-K 12 community going forward. We have to discuss how we're going to continue to make that happen, keep the buildings and the children safe. Unfortunately, some interpretations and some of the rhetoric around the project had elevated anxiety. If you aren't sure and you have questions, reach out to any of us. You can reach out to the superintendent to get more clarity, if you want a one-on-one, phone call or an email. We are hopeful that, I'm hopeful, or I'm going to say we, but you're here to say if you agree with me or not. We are hopeful that we can unite around the long list of great positives in this community. We can set our differences aside on opinions and move forward productively. There's a whole range of discussions and ideas sessions that we will come back to you with. To take a little liberty, go off format, I'm going to throw a few ideas out, thinking ahead to how we would engage the community and just get some feedback with appropriate hand gestures or murmurs. What are you guys, our voices? So we want to, the CFP is going to do a summary of an awful lot of information that some of you heard, pieces or bits of our all of overtime. We're going to condense that. This is where we are, this is the minimum of what we need to do, these are what we've learned, this is what we're proposing as an order, and then we can get your fingerprints and ideas to make it better all over it. What is the best way, potentially in mid-April, to engage not just you standing, sitting here on this evening, but the people you know, the people that we have a harder time to reach, that don't attend regularly or email or call? What do you recommend? We've had forums with over 200 people in it. What else? Please, any voice?
Just a point of information, I'm just curious if you've filled out the exit survey?
Oh, we have that.
168.
Sorry, I didn't get to that yet.
That would have been such a great source.
Well, we have... The exit survey is incredibly insightful. There, it's not a scientific survey though, and it doesn't capture everybody, because we didn't hound anybody, and if people just nodded and said, "No, thank you," or walked out on the phone, we didn't bother them. So of the 153 respondents...
168.
I'm sorry. 168 respondents, 153 said they support pre-K public education in Sunapee. 91.6 percent of respondents. 72 percent, or 77.2 percent, or 129 of respondents said, "I supported the one-campus plan." 70.7 percent, 118 of the respondents we got, believe this plan is the best solution in cost. 30.5 percent, or 51, said, "I want the schools and fields on separate warrant articles." 16.2 percent, or 27 said, "I feel the overall cost is too high." 15 people, or 9 percent, said, "I do not like the one-campus plan." And 21 people, or 12.6 percent of the respondents, "I support the school choice tuition model." So from the people that stopped by and took time and filled it out, that is what we have to go on as guidance. What I'm trying to drill at and what would help Carrie and I, in our project work on your behalf and for the board, what's the way to reach? We can do surveys, we can do a video that gets sent out, we can do forums. I run a program at Hypertherm, which is called Problem Busters, where you get large groups of people who would not usually mix together into sub-teams, do brainstorming. It's fairly intense. It's, can be a lot of fun, is that the people want to take a couple hours, because you deliver an outcome by the end of the couple-hour session. There's all kinds of ways we can do this, or try to do this, to move it down the field so that it's great that you're here, but there's a lot of other people we need to have informed and engaged so we can make a community decision. The board can hear what the community wants, you can help us figure it out, and we can fulfill our responsibility to you. If there are no other suggestions, please?
I was just going to say, I have had a lot of success with online surveys, like Survey Monkey, where it's anonymous, you know, they're honest opinion, like each person is assigned to that only, each email address can only answer once, you don't have a lot of differentiation or anything like that. But you get it online, right? And you can send it out, other people can send it to their Facebook friends or, you know, get your email.
I've used those too. I think my struggle is to reach out. I mean, unless we can get other people to help, you know, we send it out to our network and they distribute it to their network to allow for additional response, that's the only limitation, right?
Yeah, that's my thought, is that people use their own email, you know, send it out to...
Could you use a town email list? I think this whole email list tends to target more of the people that you're seeing at the forums, more people who are likely to say yes, whereas a town email list, if there such thing exists, might reach some of those people.
John, you had your hand on Walker, what was your thought?
I think the town needs the equivalent of a marriage council. We're at the point where you have two sides and they're just talking at each other, maybe listening some, and they must be professionals that facilitate these kind of difficult conversations. They're not architects, they're not consultants, they're not building estimators. They're facilitators that come in and try to get two groups of people or multiple groups of people engaged in moving down the process. So I don't know any of those people, but I'm sure they could...
Just a quick poll of this room, if we had a neutral professional facilitator, would that be appealing? Show of hands of any interest? I just, I don't want to have, you know, an hour-long discussion here, but I want to just give a chance for voices.
Just a point for... Are you talking to somebody in-house that's already on the payroll, like it's a male on pain, that has skills but isn't externally paid, or are you talking about another paid person from the outside?
And we might be able to get a volunteer. I don't want to get caught on the pay. It's a neutral, it's not somebody on the board, it's not somebody on the town, and somebody, I see that with facilitation and business problem solving, that sometimes just having that neutral voice, a little more like a mediator. So that's an idea. Let's get a few more voices so that people are... Did you have your hand up?
I was just thinking of getting the word out per survey that I think, like many touch points of the emails, maybe the ads, maybe a little postcard that has a link or call me if you want us to mail you an anniversary survey, because I definitely think there is some votes in the community that will not get done online and need to, or something at the library, you know, hitting 10 different places.
One sec. Sir in the back, please.
No, what I was just going to say is, you already kind of hit on it, if you could have something at the Abbott during a certain timeframe where people could go and stop in and fill in a survey, I just think then you get a data set to play with, right? You have a certain number of questions, you have a certain way of trends, then you start playing with the data, you're like... And you're like, okay, this question obviously is a concern here. How do we address that question? And at least you get a data set of the population to play with.
And there's room, if we can have support from the Abbott to leverage a great resource that a lot of people use for different mixes of technology fluency and accessibility. And that can, that can remain respected and we can get some consistent data. So I think that's a great idea. I like that a lot. Another hand towards the middle? Give, please?
So just on our survey thing, I just think that I got in my house a lot of postcards about voting yes and no on all the articles. And so if we can spend money on voting on an article, maybe we could spend money on a smaller postcard promoting them to go on our homepage of the board and taking the survey.
Great. Thank you for speaking up. Lizzie, did you want to add?
Just building off of what you said, I think that if we do it at the Abbott Library or physically, like do a physical survey, we should try and leave it running, maybe for like the work week just because I know that like it's busy if it happens to fall on a day that people can't go because of work, because Thursday, because of anything. We want to just try and hit as many people and make it as convenient as possible. So leaving it running, not just like a one-day thing.
Yeah, and also different time periods for people's commutes, family, jobs or otherwise. One more?
If you have physical ones, also the transfer station might be a place to get people who might not get out other places.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I moved, just a quick personal note that's totally irrelevant to this meeting, when I moved down, somebody said, oh, you're near the, near the transfer station. That's like the social hub of the town. I'm like, you're kidding. Sunday around like 10, that would probably be a good place to have a polling station for sure, or a survey. Any last comments? John?
It's, the time I started to poll, it was staggering to me how many people weren't aware of what was going on. There's still, we preach the choir a lot and the groups have their own audiences, but there's still a group in the middle that I think we need more humans out and about trying to get people. So there's just having the surveys available, but standing outside a Dunkin' Donuts and asking people. So maybe some more community polling and canvassing on that.
Yeah, both supportive and not supportive is how do we, how do we effectively reach more people? I'm sort of playing my hand that those that want to help us get the community more informed is leveraging your networks on our behalf as appropriate if we come up with something appealing from survey, Abbott or otherwise. So that's, that was just really helpful. It uncloses us out.
Yeah, just from working in a political office and stuff, I don't know if this is something that we could do, but I know that a lot of, especially an older audience, is reached through phone calls. And so I don't know if that would be a, if you had a group of neutral, or maybe not even neutral, but just a neutral group to make phone calls survey, or at least make phone calls encouraging to take the survey. Because I know that that's how a certain demographic is definitely most reached.
I'm sorry, because you opened the door. I'm also wondering if a different demographic even knows how to use a phone. That wasn't directed at you. I just happened to be speaking to you at this time. Please?
So maybe what the thing to do is get all of the information first and then those types of meetings that you talk, I'm doing a perfect segue, those types of meetings that you talk about where you get everyone together and you tell themselves and you put everything up on chart paper are a really good second phase. When you can bring that information in, so maybe you bring all that information in and then those groups that maybe polarized get together and come up with a plan that has more global buy-in from all of the stakeholders would be really good to do that.
Yeah.
So I think it's more of like a two-part thing, like here we get all our information and then we smash it all together and then everyone has buy-in.
Yeah, we have a lot of work to do. And we will start with, the CIP owns until we reformat what we, how we want to take, get the momentum going on Article Eight responses, such a strong response to the community and how we're going to move forward with that activity. So that'll start in the CIP and then we can go from there. So let's move us forward. You've been very helpful. I think that gives us a lot to think about. Field trip, Cape Cod, baseball, softball teams.
Just making you aware of the annual trip for policy, also obviously Washington, Rhode Island says it unfolds in Massachusetts, depending on and determining who will be sending that trip. We're also keeping an eye on the Gettysburg trip that'll be going up in May. I spoke with Sean today about both these trips and we don't feel that if we had to cancel these trips, there'd be any major money lost at all to the district or to the sewers.
Yeah, there's definitely some disruption with Mark's Madness and other things happening. So it's a lot for all of us to take in and also remembering is a lot for our kids to take in. The fiscal monitoring report?
So just again, so you have a copy of the report. Again, for a time we went through something like this. Overall, a great outcome. Kudos to the Policy Committee last year passing policy D R E. It was a 27-page policy, if you remember it, Scott.
I do remember it on. Really was for this compliance issue. Unfortunately, the policy we went through today, we approved that in 2007, must have been updated in 18. So that's why we did that today. There's one other correction item regarding time and evidence correction, where people that are paid out of our federal grants or receiving money out of federal grants need to have a time and contract in place. And so Kelly's working on that process. And we'll get this into the DOE in the 30 days allotted. But overall, a good report.
Great. All right. Manifests. I'm looking for a motion, one batch of AP and a second batch of payroll to do this properly. Sarah, you've got it. Can you feel it?
Yeah, I can feel it. I'll make a motion to approve the AP manifests listed on the agenda, 2020-15, 2020-17, and 2020-16, writing between. I didn't read in order.
Got it. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Andy. Any discussion? I usually say this so people understand, in between board meetings, board meetings can often be the easiest part of this role. I'm not sure easy is the right word I want to have on record, but it can be the more straightforward part of this role. There's things in between. And one of the things we do is go down to the supervisor reunion office, read through all the AP and payroll manifests, and we have to sign those for those to proceed. So that's something we do in between meetings, just to be informative so you understand what I'm talking about. So all in favor of the AP manifests as listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so unanimous. Can I get another round, please? Payroll. I want you to go on your own roll.
Payroll manifests. I make a motion to approve payroll manifests 2020-15 and 2020-16.
All right. Better format would be to say the numbers, but somehow I had to do that again.
2020-15 is $505,923.85. 2020-16 is $234,825.39.
Second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Andy. Comes in again. Discussion? Questions? Sean, Tom, while I'm looking at these, all in favor of approving the AP payroll manifest as noted? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. We are at the second of two public forum opportunities. Nice and loud, if you can just stand there, or you can sit there if you're nice and loud.
Yeah, just get it from Sonoma. I just thought of one other thing that we could do for the survey and that's on the sugar and jam sign. Just tell people about it on the sign.
Yeah, somebody yesterday said that we should get a sign, even if it's just folds out, that goes, that goes horizontal. I can't think of the word. So that you can see it from both ways when you're driving and out on the side of the building. So I thought that was a very, standards board. Standards board. Thank you. Sorry y'all had to watch that. Thank you for the suggestion. Other voices? Anyone else? Opinions? It's a pretty awesome turnout yesterday. It's amazing. This same group of people is quiet, but I'm not going to push it. This isn't to get harassed by the school board chair. I just want to encourage it. There'll be lots of time. We need your help. Move K through 12 forward, discuss the things we need to. We look forward to lots of your voices when we've all gotten some rest. Busy agenda for April meeting, April 1st, I think.
We are going April 1st, we'll have a presentation on some technology, technology of the policy. You'll be hearing recommendations on teachers and admins, picking the graduation date. There's a lot on the agenda.
Yeah, and we'll have clarity on the committees. To me, we actually did most of the lifting. There's just some other factors in the now, and you and I just getting ready for that, survey, video, forum, whatever. So I think we're in good shape to go forward with that. So Andy, you and I should talk with the rest of the CIP and get a meeting.
Yep.
Ideally next week, so we can keep that rolling. Those are always posted, they're public meetings. They're a little less formal. We sit around a table facing each other, Publix encouraged. Several people have been to those, just so everybody's aware. We've got an awful lot to plow through, so we should think about some dates. We don't have to do that right now.
Yep.
So we'll get those, so they can be posted. And then do we want to do a placeholder on forum dates, since we're mostly all together except for Ed? So I'm looking over in this area for school conflicting dates, looking over here, so we can see if we can at least get a placeholder with a full audience.
If you're going to go, I would recommend you look at May and I would look, ask you to look real early in May. Because anything after the second week, it just, it's fast and furious. So if you would go, I would say the week of May 4th, you would have a board meeting on that 6th. You could potentially go that 7th.
Can we not get into April?
I'm not sure. Well, you'll have everything where you want it to be at the next board meeting. I heard that's going to take a little bit longer to get.
Do we meet on the 1st of the eighth?
First, the first.
April or May?
April.
First, first.
We need to get our hands around how much we have to go through because it's quite a bit. So what we could do?
A lot of doubt.
We could go and we could try to, we could pin a placeholder, I would think, towards the end of April. I was going to say third week of April was my anticipation of when it would be the most responsible, aggressive first opportunity.
You also have school vacation.
Yeah, that's, I was looking at the last week of April is what I have up. No, the third week is the vacation. I see why you went with first, first of May. All right, so why don't we do this? Let's pick a date in May. If we get onto a really good roll, then we can reach out with a potential date that's sooner. If we can do sooner, we'd like to do sooner, but there's no point in setting this whole thing up. And we have a lot to digest that all of us paid for. We want to leverage it as possible. So I think that's realistic and that gives us time. We can talk about, we can also include Article Eight in the CIP meeting to really, everything can stay under one bundle beyond that data just for now. So we're honoring all voices in town. So first week of May?
Could I just talk about a split in my suggestion? My plot would be, there's lots of sports to schedule, but the spring is maybe a little, it's not quite as many as the winter perhaps. And so in the spring, sometimes what we try to do is, you know, softball, baseball games are typically at four. There's no lights on softball, baseball fields.
Right.
So if we take a whole night, games are done, right? I said so you're seven and have, so if you pair it up a night when there's already a game, I know it makes for a really long night, but you're not taking a night when people are on the road. And that from our school community, I'll just speak from that perspective.
I think the first one game is maybe like chess, right? Like, you know, juggle to the wall. So I'm a spring sports schedule, but that's why sometimes I take one. You know, I was already in town. If they're, and that's the evening, they'll end up.
All right. Anything on the 7th? May 7th as a tentative? Anything jumping out at anybody? So May 7th is tentative. We will update you. I want to move, we should move along here. Agenda, we're all set. So I need, well, I'll make a motion. So I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public session for 91-A, 3, 2, C, matters of which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than the member of the body or the agent itself, unless any such person requests an open meeting. So we're going to go into non-public, discuss something we can't talk about in public, take a motion in there, come out back to public and go home. Does that make sense? That's the process. So the meeting is over. Motion?
Thank you.
Can I get a?
I'll make a motion.
Yep. Second, you can second. I'll second. Okay. Thank you for your attendance and engagement and contributing such a high vote count.